Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you right now.
Okay, we're gonna get underway with the, actually, the first of our panel sessions for this meeting. And this is the part one of the Ocean Decade Special Session. We have six presenters, all of whom are actively engaged in decade programs or projects. Some of them in person, some of them online, but I'm gonna actually ask all of those who are in person to join me on the podium, so I don't feel quite so alone. So we have Alejandro, who's already ready to go, Lorna Inis, Christopher and Sep Pukabu, if you could come up. Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Come and have a, have a seat wherever. You, you can stay there, that's perfectly fine. So as I said, we've got six panelists. You'll hear that the themes that they're going to talk about are quite diverse, ranging from fisheries to coastal resilience to ocean prediction. There are really some common themes that are gonna come through, I think, in these different presentations, many of which we already touched on this morning, about the importance of data and observations, the importance of regional priority setting and coordination, community engagement, and the ways that we can share knowledge to influence policy. So each, each presenter is gonna have five minutes. You'll see there is a timer there, presenter, so please try and keep to time, because what we'd like to do is have a group moderated discussion at the end. So let's get underway with our first presenter, who needs no introduction to you, Alejandro Acosta from GCFI, wonderful host of this meeting, whose presentation is "Advancing Sustainable Fisheries in the Caribbean: The Role and Future Directions of the Gulf and Caribbean Fisheries Institute." So over to you, Alejandro, for your presentation.
Okay. Good morning again, everybody. I think after the wonderful keynote presentation this morning, I think this presentation is very appropriate to where we're going, where GCFI is and where we are going. At this moment, evaluating GCFI, we think, we all think in GCFI, all the members think, and we are doing really well. And we are, look at how many people are here and all that. But we need to know what we need to do to be better and to go into the next ten years and five years and getting the input from the membership. So through this section, it's probably sponsored by the UN Decade, and emphasize the ongoing commitment to the principle of the science that we need for the ocean we want. Have you moved it? Okay, so over this five seventy-five, the over seventy-five years, GCFI has been guided by the core core principles, connecting, acting, and cooperating. We bring scientists, we bring students, we bring fishermen, we be policymaking to be together here to discuss and to adapt to environmental and social challenges that we are facing in fisheries in the region, and trying to strengthen marine governance and conservation in the Caribbean and the Gulf region. So the purpose of doing an evaluation is that the regional fisheries and governance and landscaping are changing, shaped by major factors like climate change, market forces, policy, new policy frameworks to evaluate resources. And we need to develop techniques or to become more inclusive of the science-based approaches that we are using and the people that we are incorporating. We need to bring more traditional knowledge, and we need to engage more community and the community participation into what we do. Evaluating members' perception and strengths and gaps will help GCFI to improve its strategies and build stronger partnerships and alliances than enhance the financial sustainability of the resources and also strengthen the organization of GCFI. This is a crucial and very important opportunity that we have to reinforce our leadership in the region as a providers of services in the Marine Science Department and to the community. By bringing innovation and new approaches, how to deal with the problems that we are all facing. So the objectives of the evaluations are very simple: understand the member perception, identifying operational and strategic gaps, explore members' priorities, and define future directions for sustainability and financial stability of GCFI and the region. How are we gonna do that? To do that, we had to design a survey that we're gonna be providing to all of you every day, to the application, to WOBA, and we also through the list server, and where we're gonna try to identify your needs and your perceptions of how we are doing in base of community gaps, inclusivity, capacity, financial future, and what are the directions that we need to take to be sure that the institute continue to be prominent on what we do and also relevant to what you do. And there will be also, for those that there are no presence here and cannot use the WOBA application, there will be, the survey will be sent through the list server. So, and we wanna get as many, as many answers as possible to be able to evaluate what we are, what is the reality of the institute. By grounding our actions in member-driven feedback, we can strengthen GCFI, we can enhance member effectiveness, we have promote sustainability, and we can promote and grow our role in the region. This is an example of the kind of questions you're gonna be getting every day. Every day will be probably two set of questions, and you will get it through the application. Please take the time, it only takes like five to six minutes to answer. Or you can do it at the end of the week, but you have all the, there may be like twenty-five questions that you can do. But that will really help us to be able to design and to see how we and how we can really do the transferring of knowledge and the transfer of information that we all need. GCFI is time a crucial moment and one reflection and renewal of commitment of what we do. By examining what today we are and how we do things, we can shape a better sustainability of the resources in the region and at the same time, the resources we are providing to all of you. This evaluation hasn't been done in a long time, and we only get feedback for those persons who are interesting. But we wanna hear feedback from everybody, from fishers, for students, professionals, policymakers, all of them, because we need that feedback to be able to bring you a better meeting and a better organization. And at the same time, together, this was ensure that GCFI continue being a principal or a core institution to provide services to the Caribbean fisheries and to the Caribbean members. And at the same time, this will allow us to advance the mission and the mission of the UN Decade of the oceans, that is, the science we need for the ocean and we want. When we look at GCFI throughout the years, we haven't been too far from that. I think most of the concepts that the UN Decade is bringing together is something that we've been promoting for many years, probably not on their specific topic, but that's what we try to do: inclusive, bring new partnership, innovation, and engage in people, especially traditional knowledge and community-based services. So I encourage you, all of you, to present and to submit your point of view, so we can really work together and have a better GCFI meeting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Alejandro. And again, seeing many of those aligned mission statements and values between GCFI and the Ocean Decade, so looking forward to the next steps of that process. So moving on to our second speaker now, and in fact, it is going to be Dr. Lorna Inis, who is replacing Myriad O'Donovan, who I think was mentioned in the program. Myriad couldn't be with us today. But Lorna is going to speak about resilience in the tropical Americas and Caribbean region through integrated solutions and community engagement, deriving from one of our major flagship global Ocean Decade programs. So over to you, Lorna.
Thank you very much, Alison, and good morning again. As we speak, of course, everybody is waiting to hear from your friends, colleagues, family in Jamaica and neighboring countries on Hurricane Melissa. We know that we function in a high vulnerability region, that's where we live. And what I'm about to present to you is very much in that vein. One of the, of course, one of the underrepresented challenges of the Ocean Decade is to increase coastal resilience, and that's what I'm gonna be talking about. This is a proposal that we have been putting together over the last year. Fortunately, Jamaica is included in the project, in the proposal. But for eight of our countries across the wider Caribbean region, it's one of the three global ocean observing system Ocean Decade programs. And the vision of the program is a predicted global coastal ocean from events to climate. And this will require upgrade to a fit-for-purpose oceanographic information infrastructure that integrates the latest technology and methods for coastal observation and prediction. Now, the objective that we have is to co-design, and I hope that by now all of you have heard this term, co-design, because it means that we're gonna be doing it with you and with your colleagues and with your community and with your sector. So we're going to be co-designing and implementing an integrated coastal ocean observing and prediction system that will support coastal resilience. We are starting with pilot sites, because this is not a small thing, and it's something that IO Caribe, I have to admit, has been trying to do for more than twenty-five years. So to get it right this time, we need to talk to all of the sectors, everybody that we can grab, who will have something to contribute but also benefits to receive from having such a program. The system will be replicable once we do the pilot program. And hopefully, countries that are participating will be able to then expand the system to incorporate their entire coastline, wherever that may be. And so this is a map of, of the pilot sites across the globe that exist at this point. And we are, you see us there, you see us there in the middle of the Caribbean. This brings it a little bit closer. So you see the pilot sites that are proposed across the region. We're working with eight countries to start with. But if there are any, any countries represented here who are interested, we would want to be able to talk to you, because we're hoping to have a follow-up phase to this, to this project. We plan to submit this proposal to the Adaptation Fund, because it's very much addressing climate change adaptation. And some of the priority impact areas for the region include nature-based solutions. We've been hearing a lot about conservation and restoration, blue carbon monitoring, pollution impacts, et cetera. Disaster risk reduction, of course, will be positively impacted by a proposal such as this. And of course, some of the, some of the data and information that, that we will be, that we will be generating and managing on behalf of the, of the countries and with the countries includes sea surface temperature. And of course, sea surface temperature is something that affects a lot of other projects and programs in the region. So we want to be able to keep that, that long-term monitoring process going and add to it. The components of the project really align for all regions, and and this is important to strengthen the, the opportunities for knowledge sharing. So while we have other proposals that are being developed for other regions, we are also having global discussions among our stakeholders so that they learn from each other. We're gonna be strengthening national and regional capacity to monitor, predict, and assess ocean hazards. There's also gonna be improved capacity for design and implementation of multi-hazard, people-centered early warning systems. And of course, these early warning systems go from sargassum, which is a huge issue here, to hurricanes. We already have a very mature early warning system for tsunamis. And we want to learn from what has been done during the process, the twenty years of development of that early warning system, but also building on that platform. So we want to transform how observing is done in the region. Not just the ones who have a lot of money would be able to observe the ocean, but we also want to look for low-cost opportunities for monitoring the ocean. We've got drones now, we've got a lot of AI initiatives. We're looking at more expensive ones as well, like more drifting wave buoys. But telemetry, of course, is something that is a must, and the Ocean Decade is also addressing that, that deficiency. So we really want to transform the services. And we're gonna be looking at where appropriate digital twins of the ocean, of the Caribbean ocean. We also want to do assessment and reporting service for adaptation planning. And along with the early warning system, we want to actually improve safety of life at sea. So there are several opportunities to to influence positively how hazards actually impact the region. So there are many benefits, of course, not least of which is improving local capacity, increasing capabilities for science-based tools, developing regional industrial and technological businesses, supporting countries alignment with the SDGs, with the Climate Change Convention, with the Global Biodiversity Framework, and connecting solutions, in some cases low-cost solutions, for small island developing states regionally through a cost-efficient and regional approach. So we think that this proposal is the beginning of some exciting things to come in the second half of the Ocean Decade, and we're looking forward to working with all of our countries on taking this multi-hazard early warning system forward. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Laura. And I think this is a really great example of a global program that has used the framework of the decade to potentially leverage significant new resources that can filter down to the national, regional, and sub-national levels and build on that, that, those those characteristics, as we were talking about this morning. So congratulations to you and all the team for the work on this one. Okay, so our next speaker is online. It's Lora Carrillo from Iquosur in Mexico, who is going to be speaking about building regional partnerships for marine heatwave preparedness in the Caribbean and talking about that through a co-design approach. So welcome, Laura. We're thrilled to have you with us online.
I want to thank the committee to share the recent works exemplar under the goal of ocean observing, co-designing of the marine ocean decade and to develop a collaborative framework to advance monitoring, modeling, user-driving information services for marine heatwaves. I am Laura Carrillo from Iquosur, speaking alongside my colleagues Juan Carlos Cerveda, Christina Munoz, Amanda Luis Kiefer, Belalini Chusa, and Juliette Hemmels. Our aim today is to present exemplar pilot project of co-design marine heatwaves exemplar Caribbean region. Around the world, individual management events has caused losses exceeding hundreds of millions of US dollars. The number of marine heatwave days has increased notoriously over the past century. Extreme events can trigger large-scale ecosystem damage, for example, extensive sea grass die-off in Western Australia. Unintensified pressure already faced by coral reefs in places like the North American Reef where recurrent vision and reminds biodiversity of resilience. Marine heatwaves are periods of unusual warm ocean temperatures with foul-vision consequences. They couple ocean atmosphere, feeling intense storms, shifting rainfall, and dealing floods and drought. You can see a clear increase in the sea surface temperature across the Western Caribbean with more frequent and prolonged marine heatwaves. Over the same period, storms and hurricane affecting the region have become more impactful. Coral bleaching events have increased in both frequency and intensity, and they are occurring alongside global stressors of greater coral tissue loss disease, the species and human dementia chaps as COVID-19 that disruptive livelihoods and local management capacity and sargassum problem. First of all, the relevance of the observation and early warning matter compared to hurricane and sargassum, marine heatwaves are less monitored and observing capacity is fragmented, especially for subsurface conditions. We need essential ocean variables for surface at least at the upper two hundred meters and a mixed satellite and situational sources to detect, attribute, and forecast event. Co-design exercise three pilot versions were selected, Caribbean, Angolan school, and Australian coast, where this co-design will be applied, aligning monitoring, modeling, and services around user decisions, strengthening engagements of solution cycle created and used, matches, and to share knowledge of preparation to scale what the Caribbean pilot has been selected by the high ability, the stakeholder relevance, the developing but growing observing capacity, and signatures in the region. There's some advantages of leveraging existing initiatives such such as hurricane warning and sargassum monitoring programs. Sure infrastructure and that is strength for multi-hazard readiness is essential. Giving increase frequency and stability of the marine heatwaves and coral bleaching events improving the marine heatwave early system for managers and conservation planning efforts on a regional scale is crucial. And there is a great need for collaborative marine heatwave monitoring networks that will fit emergency response plans and data sharing platforms across the marine reserves and local features. Co-design action involves ensuring the future systems and government sectors focus on actionable user-driven products and decision-support tools. Example, glider deployment, the coordinate and user information needs. Satellite imagery on regional scale coupled with low-cost monitoring of sea surface temperature on a small fishes and recreational boats will be an important source of information for everyone in the system. Coordination with regional organizations such as IO Caribe and NOAA to co-design fit-for-purpose solution. Finally, there are some key messages here. Marine heatwaves are fasting reducing the diversity of shallow and deep coral reef through coral bleaching, which in turn is affecting the artisanal fisheries locally and ecotourism in the region. And a key recommendation is the, we need to increase the awareness of the marine heatwaves and its impacts on the region. Then there's a need to, for collaborative marine heatwave monitoring networks that will feed the emergency response plans and data sharing platform across the marine reserves and local features. There's a need to integrate surface and subsurface information at least in the upper two hundred meters, and that means more, more observation sites, need for observations on the kilometer scales and model downscaling. In the case in the Caribbean, we need to investigate the relationship between the sargassum biomass growth and marine heatwaves. This is a collective effort across region and institutions. Goals, co-design programs, among others, align observing, modeling, and services around community needs. We invite partners across government, academia, and industry to join and help to find solutions.
Another, another extremely rich presentation, which I think is already starting to show some, some linkages between the, the previous presentation as well in terms of regional, regional priority setting, interactions, and co-design approaches. And I think we are going to continue on that theme with another virtual presentation now, which has been given by Doug Wilson from Rutgers University on the GUSS co-design tropical cyclone exemplar, the preliminary results from the 2025 hurricane season of the Caribbean Pilot Study. So if we can go ahead with the video. He's, he's, oh, Doug, you're, we can see you. Welcome, welcome to the room. You're on the big screen in front of everyone, so over to you for the presentation.
Okay. Somebody's running that, or I hope, because I said it earlier this morning? Question?
Yeah, we're just, we're just finding the slides.
Okay, great.
Okay, just bear with us one minute. And while we're waiting for the slides, just to apologize, I gave the institutional affiliation, the incorrect institutional affiliation for Doug, it is the University of the Virgin Islands. So apologies for that, for that, Doug. Okay, I can see your slides on one screen. We are juggling between several screens, so we're just getting one on the, on the big screen, and then we will, we will go ahead. Nearly, nearly there, I think. Just bear with us, Doug. We're juggling different USB sticks. But we are getting.
Been there. I understand.
Okay, we have your, we have your slides. Is Doug going to be able to change them himself, or will somebody need to change them? Okay, so Doug, you'll just need to indicate when you need us to move.
I'll just say next slide.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, great. Thank you. I can see them. And just if you go into presentation mode, that would be great. Or, and, and not. Are you seeing just the slide and I'm seeing?
We've got you and the slides in presentation mode. So we've got everything, I think so.
I see presenter mode, which is fine. So, thank you. This does follow on nicely from the previous GUSS co-design exemplar, the heatwave exemplar, this is the tropical cyclone exemplar, co-designing ocean observing systems for improving understanding and forecasting of tropical cyclones. And as Lorna said, my, you know, all of our thoughts go out to the, the people of Jamaica and Haiti and Dominican Republic and Cuba with Hurricane Melissa. You know, it's unlikely that, you know, we can't stop these events, but we can do our best to understand and forecast and mitigate the effects of those, and that's, that's what we're trying to do. we can do our best to understand and forecast and mitigate the effects of those. And that's that's what we're trying to do here. I'm giving this talk on behalf of Scott Glenn and Cheyenne Steinbarger, Scott of Rutgers, who you mentioned, and Cheyenne of NOAA. Who are the co-leads on this TC exemplar. And um, so I'm just going to talk about a little progress in the Caribbean specifically, tropical tropical cyclone exemplar in the Caribbean. And what you see on the right of this slide is a great example of a recent project that we just did where we got together a really large group of 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 agencies, of students, of scientists, media in Barbados cooperating with the Caribbean Institute for Meteorology and Hydrology and did a glider mission in three countries, Barbados, Trinidad and Guyana in the Southeast Caribbean. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But those are some pictures from that particular project. So, next slide. Great. Looks like I might have to click through this one. So this is, you know, and observing is a Goose project. Some of the observing systems in that little box on the upper left are are really the are all Goose observing programs that are that are active in in tropical cyclone hurricane observing and and prediction. There are buoys, drone, aerial drones, aircraft measurements, dropsons, drifters, satellites. We're going to focus a little today. Click once. I thought I'd get a circle up there around the, yes. Gliders and Argo floats and and what we have found from studies and and from working with groups that do tropical cyclone forecasting, like the NOAA Environmental Modeling Center. Uh, there's just not enough subsurface profile data that is going into the models that's going into the forecast. Sea surface temperature matters, but uh even more so the entire structure of the upper ocean matters. And so that's comes from both this, you see the modeling group here, and we also have a an endorsement from the World Meteorological Organization's Regional Hurricane Region Four Hurricane Group. We need more upper ocean observations and that's going into this ocean observing value chain, you know, the ocean observing strategy of of looking at the users and working backwards to determine what the observations are. The public needs trusted information to make recommendations based on forecasts. I mean, if we knew, you know, the sooner we know where and when and how strong tropical cycling is going to be, the better job we can do at beginning to mitigate its impact on the population. You know, we can evacuate, we can prepare uh for the safety of of property and coastal resources. That is the information is provided by emergency managers, responders, media, et cetera. Their information comes from the forecast centers. Their information in turn comes from the operational modelers, the people that, you know, you see all these spaghetti models, the forecast models, how strong will it be? Where's it going to go? That's the operational modeling centers and those modeling centers need ocean information. They need turn to the ocean observing system for that data. They turn to the scientists and the operational bodies that are collecting that data. And that's how we, you know, make that that requirements into an ocean observing strategy. Next slide. In order to get that for the Caribbean, we're focusing on, uh, you know, more upper ocean data. And here we see the examples of of Argo floats and glider data. Glider data is in red, Argo floats are in the, I guess, their blue green dots. There's just some numbers about how much is available. There turns out there's a lot more in the Gulf of Mexico than there is in the Caribbean over a much smaller area, just showing how important it is to get this in the Caribbean. Glider data are even more important because they happen, we get a profile of the upper ocean every two or three hours. An Argo float gives us a profile every ten days. And we need that to rapid data in order to get into the models, to be assimilated and to provide the changes to the modeled ocean that drive the forecasts. One thing that you see here is this is last year's data. Much of the data has been, or much of the location of the data has been driven by the fact that most of the profiles have been provided by US entities. You see those in the east, like around Puerto Rico. But I will say there's a lot of data now coming in from Mexico. That's this blob over here by the Yucatan Peninsula. One thing we've been trying to do through the exemplar and and supporting projects is to spread that out. And you'll see a red blob there around Martinique. That's the result of a project that we've worked with in Martinique. And now by twenty twenty five, I think maybe we can go to the next slide. Here's what we're trying to do. You see down in the lower southeastern corner, you see the glide around Barbados. That's a a mission that we just accomplished in, again, collaboration with CIMH. Our goal is to make these operational measurements and more a regular feature of the observing system in the Caribbean. So that's South Atlantic flow in the southeast. That's freshwater that comes up from the tropics. Freshwater near the surface can lead to stronger intensification and is poorly modeled. Similarly, we see water inflows in the northeast. You see the gliders around Puerto Rico, the US Virgin Islands. Uh, I work in US Virgin Islands. We have a glider center there. There's one in Puerto Rico. That's North Atlantic water, again, changing the structure of the upper ocean. We're beginning to look at the more data in the central and western Caribbean. We'll be doing those that red and the orange sections soon in both between Dominican Republic and Chris How. We did that last year and it went under Hurricane Barrel, got some great data and improved the forecast. Unfortunately, um, our glider for Jamaica, the plans are for that to go out sometime in the next couple of months. And again, Mexicans, particularly Sisasi gliders have been contributing to the Yucatan area. Next slide. This is just a summary of the data of the project we just did in in Barbados, July to October, ninety days at sea, two thousand kilometers. One of the great things about this one, again, each of these profiles, we do a profile every three hours. It goes right into the global telecommunications system. It gets picked up by them, ocean models, the US, the European, all the models. And is used immediately. I just want to point out here, we work through CIMH and we're able to get very rapid response on getting permission, marine science research permissions to fly in the EEZs of Barbados, but also Guyana and Trinidad. And so that's a something that has to happen in order to make operational observations like this possible in a region like the Caribbean, which is completely somebody's EEZ. I mean, these observations will take place in multiple EEZs and we have to come up with a way to make that happen on a on a regular and easily achievable basis in order to make this happen. Next slide. I mean, this is a little going into the weeds, but the point of this is that collecting this data with Argo floats and gliders truly impacts the models used to forecast. That red line that you see is the actual glider profile, the um, excuse me, the red line that you see is the model that's used for the the hurricane forecast and the blue line is the glider model. And you can see that before the data is assimilated, they're not even close. It's a very bad version of the upper ocean and it just does not do a good job in modeling. Next slide. Within a day or two of getting these data assimilated into the model, we've completely corrected the model and it now is able to do a much better job of making a forecast. This is a specially true of intensity forecast. You'll see these examples like Melissa where there is rapid intensification and this is going to enable us to do a much better job of forecasting rapid intensification. And rapid intensification is the thing that really blows the forecasts. I mean, the when you've got something like that, it occurs less than seventy two hours before landfall, it's simply not enough time to give a good warning to the to the local population. Next slide. This is just an example of of what the models look like. This is temperature depth. Again, not just the sea surface temperature is important, but the whole upper ocean structure. And what you see there in the slide on the left is the model ocean, if you will, before assimilation. Colder water is purple blue, warmer water is orange yellow. And again, by assimilating the glide data from one glider in the eastern Caribbean, this is that Trinidad deployment. We have improved the model by this is salinity in this case, but we have completely changed the model into a much better representation of the upper ocean. So next slide, just sort of a summary. The upper ocean profiles in the Caribbean are very undersampled. Critical profile data has been concentrated in US and Mexican waters and our goal throughout this is to spread that throughout the entire Caribbean. The Goose Co-Design exemplars provide a framework for that expansion and the framework for the Caribbean Pilot Study. It's not just expanding, but building capacity to maintain that observing network and expand it over time among the countries of of the region. And um, I don't have enough time by far to talk about it, but we did create some some great, you can talk to Lorna. We have video, we have examples of how the twenty twenty five Barbados glider deployment demonstrated that value for operational modeling science. And our future vision is there will be glider ports, Argo float deployment capability um among multiple Caribbean glider ports. We've already established those in Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. We've worked on that in Martinique. It's happening in Mexico. It's happening in Barbados and hopefully we'll expand it to Jamaica and other countries. So, uh, yep, thank you very much. I should be around for questions at the panel for a little while.
Great. Thank you so much, Doug, for that very comprehensive overview of this exemplar. And I think there are a couple of issues coming out there that we're also seeing in other programs in the decade about really being able to demonstrate the value of observations for community decision-making and policy. And also one of the pet issues of mine in the that I hope the decade can advance on permitting issues and ensuring that permitting is made easier in EEZs. So that we can be effectively collecting this fundamental data. So thank you for that. We're going to move to our next presentation now. Christopher Kuzak from the Environmental Defense Fund. We'll be talking about F VON Caribbean, building a fishing vessel ocean observing network to improve only winning systems and support resilient fisheries across the Caribbean. So, Ovija, Christopher.
Thank you very much, Allison, and really, really great to be here. Good morning. My name is Chris Kiesak. And I'm here to talk about the Fishing Vessel Ocean Observing Network, or FBON, as we call it, and how we're working to scale ocean observing across the Caribbean. I'd like to start by echoing what Doug was just communicating and that there's a fundamental lack of in-city ocean data in the Caribbean. Uh, but this is not just the case in the Caribbean. It's the case for everywhere on earth. And actually, the biggest data gaps exist in coastal and shelf seas, areas close to land. And that's the focus of F VON is filling these data gaps. Okay. Okay, so why, why is it important to fill data gaps? Um, I always like to start with the impact and what we're leaving on the table here. Um, I think we heard from, I think it was Laura who talked about marine heatwaves. Um, and there's a lot of other examples of potential impact. Allison was talking about the ten um ocean decade challenges and data are needed to solve every single one of those challenges. Other examples are we struggle to accurately forecast how intense hurricanes are going to get. Uh, we can't really understand when harmful algal blooms and other events are going to happen or even why they happen. Ecosystem-based fisheries management, how are we supposed to incorporate environmental factors into management and assessment? If we don't even understand the environmental factors themselves. Um, and all of these things are having a very real impact on the livelihoods of coastal communities globally. So the blue economy, right? So those folks that that provide goods and services on and for the ocean. These guys basically basically turn data or information into money, right? They use this data that are being collected and currently they don't necessarily contribute to the cost of data collection. And so we think that it kind of makes sense to think about how to engage the private sector to sustain ocean observing in the future. So how do we start to address these challenges? Well, with data, obviously. We need a lot more data to feed a new generation of predictive models that are being that are being developed. They're enabled by new technologies such as artificial intelligence. And I'm here to talk about a critical part of the solution. Many of them are here in this room, but they're fishers. And fishers represent, I would argue, the largest latent source of in-city ocean data anywhere on earth. There's millions of fishers that operate in the areas of the ocean where the biggest data gaps exist. Um, and we have a method that engages them in ocean data collection. We're already doing this in the Bahamas, in the Caribbean, and my colleague Sep will talk about that project next. So what is the F VON method? Well, first, fishers affix sensors to their gear, whether that be pots, long lines, deep drop, hookah diving, you name it. They also fix a solar powered deck box to their to their vessel and then they fish. That's it. Uh, the sensors last for two years without needing a new battery. They last for two years without needing to be recalibrated. Right now, we're just collecting temperature, mainly collecting temperature, but there's more variables on the horizon. When the gear gets back to the vessel, it automatically sends information over Bluetooth to the deck box. Then it goes to the cloud where it can be accessed in close to real time. So with this easy technology and the millions of suitable vessels that operate where the biggest data gaps exist. And the fact that the cost of collecting data in partnership with fishermen is at least an order of magnitude less than the alternatives. We believe we have the keys to achieving scale across the Caribbean. So building on this, what does our strategy look like? Well, there's five components to this. First, we want to build on the Bahamas work and we want to implement pilot projects in partnership with Caribbean nations and work to get the data into the hands of those that that need it. That means fishery managers, hurricane forecasters, national med agencies, scientists and fishers themselves. Second, we want to identify the impacts that the data are having for these communities and communicate those impacts widely. That means newspaper articles, blogs, conference presentations, videos. Uh, this is really, really important and it's not given enough attention. Um, but I just want to emphasize that this is, this is absolutely critical for getting a critical mass of people thinking about this this stuff. Third, and this is also important, we need to improve the value proposition to fishermen uh for engaging in ocean data collection. We need to develop fisher-centric tools to help them save fuel costs and form the where to fish. And we also need to help them understand how changes in their marine ecosystems are impacting their livelihoods. Fourth, and this is, um, this is particularly pertinent to what Allison was saying earlier, but we need countries to come together to fund ocean data collection across the Caribbean. And the Caribbean models that that can improve impacts to one country are populated using data collected in another country, right? So the shared benefits of collecting data among the among Caribbean nations. And so we feel that this really needs to be a regional effort. And lastly, And lastly, government funding, research grants and facilities such as the one that the Coast Pre- Coast Predictor using uh working with to scale ocean observing, they don't last forever. And so in order to to create sustained scale, which means not just, you know, a five or 10 year timeline, but but kind of a reinforcing mechanism to 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 collect ocean data. We need to engage the private sector to do that. So to summarize, um, there's a lot of momentum right now for scaling ocean observing. We've heard from Goose and Coast Predict and the Adaptation Fund especially. Ira Karib has a key role to play in that. But my point is that cost effective ocean data collection, F B ON is a part of that, is the key to the scale. In order to scale, we need the support of both the folks that are collecting the data, but those that need the data to improve outcomes for their coastal communities such as governments. We're doing this through tool development, communications and facilitating data provision. And in the long term, data will feed growth in the sustainable blue economy. So it stands to reason that some of these benefits, these monetized benefits of ocean data should go to supporting the collection of data in the first place. Very happy to be here. So um, my name is Chris Kiesak. QR code for our website is here. And Miguel, Miguel, would you mind raising your hand? Miguel is on the steering committee of F B ON, and so please come up to us and engage. We'd love to talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chris. And that link effectively between unlocking the potential in the sustainable blue economy and showing that the financial flows from those who are benefiting from the data and those who are collecting the data are there. So thank you very much for that. And I think we are going to continue in a in a similar and and build on that presentation by looking at the the pilot study in the Bahamas, if I'm not incorrect. So Sep Pocable from the Environmental Defense Fund as well is going to talk about the Bahamian Fish and F VON, I will call it. And looking at how this pilot is improving hurricane forecasting across the region and community resilience. Thank you. Over to you, Sep.
Thank you, Allison. Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias. Buongià. Bonjour. Good to see you all. Yes, we are going to continue on this path and talk specifically about how has F B ON played out in the Bahamas. A few of my colleagues are also here. Prescott Smith has helped with this project, collecting data. So has Adrian LaRota. If you're here, Adrian, raise your hand, as well as Sharice Roll. Few folks that worked with us in the Bahamas. So everyone here in this room has a story about hurricanes, whether you lived through it or your family or your friends, right? This might be one of the most shaping forces in the Gulf and Caribbean region. My talk today is going to really focus on how can we better prepare? How can we better respond? How can we rewrite the future of hurricane preparedness? Doug mentioned this, but rapid intensification is becoming a much more frequent problem as we see climate change exacerbate issues in the region. Raise your hand if you would evacuate from a category one hurricane. I lived through one last year and I will now too. How about a category two? Raise your hand if you would evacuate for a category three. How about a category four? Raise your hand, please, if you would evacuate for a category five hurricane. This is the dynamic throughout the Caribbean, right? Now, most of us didn't raise our hand during a cat one. But with this example here from Hurricane Otis, it went from a cat one to a cat five in twenty four hours. None of the models predicted that. And so we have massive data gaps that are also leading to loss of life, loss of property that could be ultimately prevented. Now hurricane track forecasting has really improved vastly. But intensity forecasting, we still have a lot of troubles with that. And the biggest piece there is data. Sea surface temperature from satellites alone is not enough. Hurricanes feed from heat in the ocean and this is especially from the deep parts of the ocean. And this is true for that energy that's above twenty six degrees Celsius all the way down to a hundred meters. Now, again, climate change is leading to a lot more rapid intensification, more frequent and less predictable. Some good examples are Hurricane Dorian in two thousand nineteen, Ian in two thousand twenty two, and Otis in twenty three. No time to prepare means deadly consequences for communities. And this is why we've been working on this primarily in the Bahamas. Now, our installation campaign, Chris gave a great overview of what the F B ON approach looks like. We've worked with ten vessels across the Bahamas and this has transformed data collection, just ten vessels. Now, think about all the fisher folk that are in your community, that are in your country. Think about all that potential. Doug had a really fascinating map showing where the gliders are, where some of these other approaches are used. But if you look at the coastal regions where a lot of fishers actually fish, there wasn't a ton of data coming from those areas. And this is where fishermen and fishing communities provide such a a critical piece of this work. This was temperature and depth sensors only. But still, you can transform lives just by collecting temperature data over a course of time. And in this project, our coverage really spanned across the northernmost parts of the Bahamas all the way to the southern reaches. Again, this is this is ten fishermen and we only had seven that were actually operating most of the time. Look at the coverage of this data collection across the entire Bahamas. Now, the results, we had about forty six hundred temperature depth profiles. Again, a huge number of data coming from a small number of fishers. And we continue to collect that. We have a fisherman we just called yesterday and said, we know we know that this hurricane is going to be headed to the Bahamas. If you're fishing, let's make sure we deploy those sensors. When you look at the data, two hundred forty seven days of those profiles, which is about eighty one percent of the days is when sea surface temperature exceeded that intensification threshold. And if you look deeper, we had actually three hundred and eighty eight days, of course, across a two year period, which is about eighty six percent of the time when those deeper waters were above the intensification threshold. And again, this was seven out of ten vessels. So we're going to be continuing this work over the next year. But where else can we go with this? I think we need to increase the vessel network both in the Bahamas but across the region to improve both spatial and temporal coverage. When you're working with lobster fishermen, they're not going to be fishing a good chunk of the year in the Bahamas, at least because there's a closed season, right? So we need to diversify. We've worked with mail boats that will actually stop when they're transporting people and goods with a rod and reel, drop their temperature sensor down to a hundred meters or more, retrieve it and then be on their way. In the Bahamas, we are strengthening local partnerships with the University of the Bahamas, becoming the core co-lead on this project. And we also want to expand to data uses across different early hazard warning systems like we heard from Laura on coral bleaching, marine heatwaves. And ultimately, as we all deal with, identify funding to continue sustaining this network. Thank you all.
Thank you, Seb, and some incredible results there from that initial pilot phase. And as you say, with just ten research fishing vessels underway. So according to my timer, we have six minutes left in this session. Yes, I'm looking at the the team. Yep. So if I can ask Alejandro to join us back on stage and Lorna, if you're if you're still around, we are going to have time just for a couple of questions. Hopefully Doug is still online. So maybe we'll be able to take maximum two questions from the audience. So start thinking about that. And while you're thinking about that, I'm actually going to use the moderator's privilege and put the first question to Chris and Sep, which is how do you convince fisher folk to engage in this? What is that value proposition to convince fisher fishers to engage in this scheme?
I'm going to pump this up on this one.
Well, first and foremost, find someone like Adrian LaRota that knows ninety eight percent of the fishermen in the country. And then second, it's the human element, right? So many people have lived through hurricanes that have devastated communities and lives. And we provide a stipend, but there's a lot of fisher folk that Adrian engaged and said, I don't need a stipend. If this is going to improve hurricane forecasting and help my community, I want to help out. And I think that transcends across a lot of different issues from marine heatwaves, coral bleaching, these early warning systems that ultimately the fishermen are dealing with on a daily basis and making sure that they have access to that data to inform their own decisions.
Can I just add something that when you go to the Bahamas and you talk to fishermen about the impacts of hurricanes, every fisherman and every every community has a different story about the most impactful hurricane that they they they've lived through. And so hurricanes are close to their heart. They've had they've had family members die, they've had their houses destroyed. And so if you can communicate what you're trying to do effectively, then that it's it's a lot easier to get them on board. And that's again, why communications is so critical here.
Thank you so very much. The the human personal lived experience is is an influence in that. Looking to the room to see if we have any questions for the speakers on the panel or for Doug, who I believe is still online. Yes, please, if we have a a microphone that we can. Please let us know if there's a specific panelist that you'd like to put the question to.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Yes. Hi, I'm Antonella Rivera. I work with the Coral Reef Alliance. And my question is for the last two presentations on the F B ONs. We know that Caribbean fisheries are very diverse. And I was wondering, how are you thinking about making these more adaptable to that diversity in gears, species and fleets? And also thinking of the future, how are you planning on ensuring equitable access across nations and fleets as well, considering the local context?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think there were two parts to the question. So the the adaptability of the of the gear and the approach to different fishermen. We have worked in the Bahamas with people, you know, who operate a fifteen horsepower outboard on a fifteen foot skiff all the way up to a two hundred foot mailboat that travels between islands. And so the gear and the technology is very adaptable, it's transferable. The sensor's smaller than the size of this water bottle and the and the deck box is smaller than the size of my computer. And it's low touch, right? The fishermen don't have to do anything. And so it's it's very powerful. In terms of, I think the second part of your question, I didn't quite catch it, but it was about how are you, how are we planning on sustaining the network given this adaptability? And again, it comes back to, you know, lasting support. And you know, if you think about government grants, research grants, I mean, a lot of stuff the G C F I does. It's ephemeral in the long term. And so what you need is is to really create this self reinforcing dynamic where the people who are benefiting from the ocean data, who are willing to pay for the ocean data because they're benefiting benefiting from it, are actually engaged in providing that data. So they're they're actually paying for the data itself. And I believe that that's a key part of the future of ocean observing is engaging the private sector, getting them to transfer some of those monetized benefits to the people collecting the data. And hopefully fishermen can get paid out of that too.
May I also respond on the last question, the last question? This is one of the reasons why Io Caribe UNESCO is partnering with F VON. Because Io Caribe is an intergovernmental process. It has all the the member states of the of the wider Caribbean region on the Western Atlantic side as members. And so this conversation that you're talking about, the sustainability of such a network and how it fits into the global ocean observing network really is what determines the sustainability of the process. So this is one element of a much wider global ocean observing network. And we hope hopefully we will be developing it such that we are able to sustain it over time.
Thank you very much. We've come to the end of the time with the panel, but I am going to beg your indulgence for one more minute because I would like to hear one more word from each of you. A lot of what we heard is about co-design, regional cooperation, ensuring that data informs community and individual decision making. If you could prioritize one next step under the Ocean Decade to advance on these agendas, what would it be? And please keep it to three to five words maximum. And we'll go through the panel and then Doug, if you're if you're still online. So really, the priority next step for the region under the Ocean Decade to achieve the aims.
For me, I will say engagement, get engaged. This belongs to you, not to us. So get engaged for this to work.
For me, it is that I want to know the Ocean Decade should know what you're doing. So this week, the Io Caribe team is going to be talking to to many of you. And we're going to be encouraging you to endorse your project, your program, your research as an Ocean Decade action for the region. That way, we begin to gather the data, the information for use in the region. But then the benefit to you is that what you are doing gets a higher profile. And also it gets, it comes before the before the donors if you need funding.
I I totally agree with with both of the the panelists here. Engagement was already taken, so I'll again say communication. Improve the communications coming out of the UN Ocean Decade, out of Coast Predict, out of Ira Karib. I think communications, videos, we're we're developing videos, we're trying to get articles placed in newspapers, we're trying to write journal articles. That is going to get people excited and on board. And that could have the most impact, I believe.
My name is Devon Berry. I'm the Goose, Io Caribe Goose Program Consultant, speaking for Scott Glenn and Doug Wilson on the Tropical Cyclone Exemplar. My three words would be small islands funding. So need to get access to glider technology in the small islands in the Caribbean and expand glider and drones and fishing vessels, expanding ocean observations on all types of instrumentation. Thank you.
I will echo funding, but very importantly, funding that reaches communities. We hear about the billions and billions that's being raised around the world and focused on the blue economy. But if it doesn't reach the communities and the capacity is not built and the communities don't see the benefit, you lose those champions, you lose those livelihoods.
That definitely deserves a round of applause. Engagement, communication, talking about the benefits, accessible funding and getting more data into the systems. A huge round of applause to all our panelists. Thank you all so much. And please, I will now hand over to Lorna, I think, who's going to take on part two of the Ocean Decade special session. So please do stay in it, listen to that.
Hello, okay. Okay, so we move into the second part of the Ocean Decade session. And I'm your moderator for this the second hour. So we have one, two, three, four, six, five, five presentations. And I would invite those who are presenting in person to join me on the podium. We have Margarita Lopez from the Ocean Decade Coordination Office for Ocean Data Sharing. We have Johanna Herrera Arango from Pontificia Universidad Averiana. We have Carlos Pacheco from Infimar. Adia Perez from the Bonefish and Tarpon Trust. We have Carolina Garcia from Infimar as well. I'm just confirming that all the presentations are in person, Marco, for this session. Okay. I'm just confirming that all the presentations are in person, Marco, for this session. Okay. So welcome all of you and thank you very much for being here. We're going to go directly into the, into the presentation. So the first one by Margarita Lopez is data sharing across the Ocean Decade. Of course, this fits very well with just about everything that we've heard so far in the GCFI 78. So we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Lorna, for the presentation. Gracias por la invitación y por el espacio. Yo como dice Lorna, me llamo Margarita Lopez. Trabajo en la oficina de coordinación del diseño para el intercambio de datos oceánicos. Y voy a hablar un poco cómo dar un contexto muy rápido del panorama en el intercambio de datos en el diseño de los océanos. No me voy a detener acá porque Alison ya creo que dio una presentación y una introducción completa, pero nosotros, la oficina de coordinación para intercambio de datos, somos una de las catorce oficinas de coordinación de las que Alison pues habló en su, en su presentación. Somos parte de esa estructura descentralizada y nos enfocamos principalmente en darle apoyo a los proyectos del diseño en temas temáticos relacionados con manejo de datos, gestión de datos y el intercambio también. Aparte de eso también estamos adscritos al Programa Internacional de Intercambio de Datos Oceánicos, o en inglés IODE. Somos parte, digamos que también de ellos y parte de la COI, que es la Comisión Oceanográfica Intergubernamental. Nuestro, bueno, voy a ir acá. Todas las actividades que nosotros desarrollamos están enfocadas principalmente en fomentar el intercambio de datos globalmente y ayudar a que esos estándares y esas cosas en temas de proyectos que de pronto no tienen la capacidad de tener una persona de datos, pues puedan darse. Esto lo hacemos a través de sensibilización con los proyectos. También trabajamos en el desarrollo de capacidades y en colaboración pues con los proyectos en el diseño. Para desarrollar esto tenemos tres líneas de trabajo. La primera es apoyar a proyectos y darles como guía en cómo hacer intercambio de datos, cómo manejar estándares en ese tema para los que no tienen conocimiento o capacidad. Pero también el intercambiar ese conocimiento cuando hay proyectos que tienen mucha capacidad en este tema. Uno de los enfoques que tenemos en esto, aparte de hablar como directamente con los proyectos, porque ya vieron en la introducción que dio Alison, son más de 500 proyectos y hablar individualmente uno con uno es difícil. Entonces, uno de los enfoques que tenemos es hablar con las estructuras regionales y nacionales que tienen que ver con los datos. Entonces están los Comités Nacionales del Diseño, en este caso en Colombia es la CCO. Están los Centros Nacionales de Datos, que son parte de la red de IODE y las Unidades Asociadas de Datos. En este caso, en Colombia está el INBEMAR, está DIMAR. Y son, digamos que esas reuniones es más para enfocar el trabajo que nosotros hacemos para facilitar intercambio de datos para los proyectos que lo necesitan. Luego nos concentramos también en el tema de implementar la estrategia de datos del diseño. Aquí no me va a tener mucho, pero hemos producido o estamos a punto de lanzar dos guías en cómo compartir datos socioeconómicos y datos de ciencia ciudadana, que son dos áreas que ahora tienen como un boom especial. Y también trabajamos, retomando un poco lo que decían en el panel, con el sector privado en cómo dar guianza al intercambio en datos de batimetría. Y justo hoy salió uno de mar y de megafauna. Entonces también esos son guías que les damos a las empresas para facilitar ese intercambio. Y en este, en este lado también trabajamos con el Atlas Digital de los Océanos, que la idea es que sea el legado del diseño y que sea una plataforma para mostrar todo el trabajo y todas las actividades que se hicieron bajo el marco de, del diseño. Buscamos también casos locales y particulares. Entonces, por favor, si alguno tiene algún proyecto, algo puede venir hacia, pues hablar conmigo y podemos discutir para también pues mostrar el trabajo que se está haciendo en la región. Y por último, también trabajamos en desarrollo de capacidades, entrenamiento. Entonces tenemos varios webinars y entrenamientos dirigidos al manejo de los datos y a el desarrollo de capacidades con puntos focales en cada región. Que luego el mañana a las siete hay una sesión de postería y voy a estar hablando un poco más sobre las herramientas que tenemos. Y ya eso es todo. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Margarita. Perfect timing also. You obviously practiced quite a bit. So our second speaker, Johanna Herrera Arango, is going to be telling us about mapping the sea as a lived space. Data, sea scapes and Afro-descendants livelihoods in the Greater Caribbean. Go ahead, please. Bear with us, please. We're having some challenges bringing up the presentation. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next speaker and then come back to Johanna. Our next speaker is Carlos Pacheco from Infimar Colombia, leading the Ocean Decade, Continuous Monitoring of Marine Water Quality and Microplastics Red Cam.
Buenas tardes. Bueno, eh... En las zonas costeras de Colombia se presenta una serie de problemáticas ambientales, por lo cual pues necesitábamos nosotros realizar un seguimiento a todas estas problemáticas, cierto? Como contamos con esta herramienta, una de ellas es la Red Cam, que básicamente pues es una red institucional que colecta, sistetiza y analiza datos de calidad de aguas y sedimentos marinos y costeros. Esta información pues es útil para el manejo y para la toma de decisiones por parte de las autoridades ambientales. Adicionalmente pues también existe el ICAN, que es el índice de calidad de aguas, marinas y costeras. Y pues es una herramienta que nos permite obtener un indicador para poder facilitar la interpretación de cómo se encuentra la calidad de las aguas. Bueno, por otro lado pues está la parte de microplástico, el cual fue incorporado a la Red Cam en el año 2017. Y pues la basura marina se incorporó, el monitoreo basura marina se incorporó en el año 2018. Pues tenemos una serie de estaciones priorizadas en arenas de playa, aguas marinas, estuarios, ríos y manglares. ¿Cómo funciona el ICAN? Pues es un indicador, como les mencioné al principio, que lo que busca es tratar de, lo que busca es traducir la parte numérica e interpretarlo de una forma categórica para que sea de fácil entendimiento, cierto? Los cuales varían desde cero a cien y son categorías que van desde calidad pésima, inadecuada, aceptable, adecuada y óptima. Y se utiliza una serie de variables tanto en agua marina como agua estuarina, que son el océano disuelto, el pH, nitratos, ortofo-fatos, sólidos suspendidos totales, carbono orgánico total, coliformes termotolerantes. Y dependiendo del cuerpo de agua, si es agua marina, utilizamos los hidrocarburos del petróleo disueltos y dispersos equivalentes al crecional. Y si es agua estuarina, trabajamos con clorofila. Para poder calcular esto pues es necesario tener un mínimo de seis variables. En la parte de microplástico pues seguimos los protocolos de remarco y básicamente pues recolectamos arena de playa superficial. Y esto pues son transportados al laboratorio para poder analizarlos posteriormente. Bueno, como resultado pues tenemos cómo se encuentra en los últimos años, cómo se ha comportado el ICAN en Colombia. En el año 2018 hasta el 2019 hubo una tendencia a la disminución de la calidad de buenas, de calidad buena en algunas estaciones. Para el año 2020 pues se complicó un poco esto por el tema de la pandemia. No fue posible colectar en todas las estaciones por todas las dificultades que se presentaron. Pero finalmente pues en los últimos años ha permanecido relativamente estable en alrededor del 58% de estaciones con buena calidad de agua, cierto? En el Pacífico fue donde fue un poco más complicado el tema de la pandemia, pues no fue posible realizar monitoreos en ese momento. Bueno, cómo nos encontramos en Colombia con las basuras marinas que hemos encontrado. En el Atlántico pues es donde más ha reportado las abundancias de concentración de basura marina en Playa Miramar, cierto? Y en Playa de Puerto Colombia, tanto en época seca como en época lluviosa. Es algo que se ha visto en otras ocasiones y recurrente. Y estos pues principalmente están compuestos de plásticos. En menor medida pues se encuentran otros materiales como metales, papel, textiles y vidrio. En el Pacífico colombiano hemos encontrado altas abundancias en el departamento de Nariño y similar al Caribe, pues lo que más se encuentra pues son los plásticos que constituyen alrededor del 78%. En el caso de los microplásticos pues también sobresale el departamento del Atlántico con altas abundancias tanto en las playas de Miramar, playas de Puerto Colombia, en las playas de un tastillero, que son playas que se encuentran con frecuente basura y contaminación. También se destaca un poco algunas playas de los departamentos de Magdalena y ondas de playas de Córdoba, como los Córdobas. En menor medida pues en la Guajira, pues un departamento que presenta poca contaminación en general. Estos microplásticos principalmente los que más se encuentra pues son los fragmentos, espumas y filamentos. En el Pacífico colombiano pues encontramos esto en Valle del Cauca, en Playa Peanguita, que es una playa que tiene alta influencia turística y pues presenta mucha contaminación de microplásticos. Similar al Caribe pues también los que más abundan pues son fragmentos, espumas y filamentos. Bueno, como conclusiones pues el ICAN en el año 2024 pues varió entre calidad pésima y óptima y pues en respeto a los plásticos pues alrededor del 86% corresponde a plástico, cierto? En los departamentos Atlántico, Córdoba y Magdalena. Como resultado pues de actividades turísticas, urbanas e industriales. Pues como recomendación pues es necesario fortalecer el monitoreo, todo este manejo integrado para poder mitigar estos impactos. Y pues este escenario nos muestra de que hay una alta contaminación de plástico en las playas. Si es de que es necesario mejorar y poder fortalecer el monitoreo a nivel nacional. Se agradecimientos al INBEMAR, a Ministerio de Ambiente, cierto? Los nuevos de la Red Cam, que son las corporaciones que trabajan con nosotros. Y pues la información disponible en nuestros, en nuestro web pueden encontrar toda la información de serie calidad de agua, de microplástico, de basura. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Carlos. And again, we're really seeing the connections between these presentations. And are we ready with, are you ready? Okay, okay. Okay, so we're now going to go back to mapping the sea as a lived space. Johanna Herrera Arango.
Gracias. Bueno, muchas gracias por esta oportunidad de compartir esta experiencia de mapeo en el Gran Caribe. Quiero contarles quiénes somos y qué hacemos, por qué estamos haciendo este mapeo de espacios marinos habitados por pueblos afrodescendientes. Por supuesto cómo lo estamos haciendo y qué estamos encontrando a la fecha. Yo trabajo en la Universidad Averiana, pero la universidad es apenas una parte de una gran coalición que está trabajando por hacer visible la presencia de pueblos afrodescendientes en el Gran Caribe. Es un ejercicio que empezó en el 2018 en el área continental y en el 2021 en las zonas de litorales y costa afuera, principalmente para la identificación de espacios marinos habitados ancestralmente en ecosistemas que consideramos de especial importancia para la conservación y por supuesto también en el debate actual sobre cambio climático. En la COP 16 se presentó este Atlas, que está por aquí, una partecita de la foto, que recoge los resultados preliminares. Y en la COP 30, que menos de un mes estará desarrollándose, vamos a presentar la siguiente parte del ejercicio de mapeo. Este análisis se está haciendo porque hay una idea en el marco de las políticas públicas de que el espacio marino está deshabitado. Y precisamente parte de lo que quiere este ejercicio es identificar cuáles son los maritorios. Maritorio es una noción que viene de la literatura chilena por la creación de la ley, una ley de 2018 que crea los espacios costeros marinos de pueblos originarios. Es una noción que habla de la tenencia marina, similar a lo que sucede dentro de las tierras firmes, el área emergida. La idea es poder utilizar esta noción de tenencia marina que algunos estados han desarrollado para justamente visibilizar, aportar a enfoques más inclusivos de lo que está pasando con las áreas marinas y la posibilidad de incorporar decididamente a los pueblos en las instancias de toma de decisiones. Y lo que corresponde a la Universidad Averiana, nosotros estamos a cargo de construir la infraestructura de datos para ese ejercicio de mapeo de maritorios. Entonces es una infraestructura muy similar a lo que han mostrado otros colegas más temprano, relacionado con plataformas de SIG, de información espacial, que permite hacer un modelamiento temporal de cómo ha ido, se ha ido transformando el litoral y cómo las áreas especialmente dedicadas a la pesquería y dedicadas a la navegación están siendo afectadas por diferentes problemáticas. Entre ellas, por ejemplo, las sabidas disputas que hay con la industria turística, los problemas que hay con energías eólicas, los problemas que hay alrededor de la ampliación de puertos. y otros conflictos que afectan la pesquería y la navegación. Entonces estamos intentando superponer toda esta información para poder mostrar un mapa más completo que incluya los sujetos y sus formas de vida, ¿no? Por eso la idea es que podamos mostrar el mar como un espacio habitado. Metodológicamente también la estrategia incluido procesos formativos se han graduado alrededor de 45 personas de 15 países del Gran Caribe en el manejo y uso de estas plataformas. Estamos encontrando datos muy relevantes en este minuto que me queda relacionado con el alto auto reconocimiento que hay en el Gran Caribe como pueblos afrodescendientes. Ustedes saben que estamos ante un espacio multilingüe de poblaciones criboles, garifunas, de pueblos, de navegantes que comparten una historia común y por lo tanto comparten el uso de las mismas áreas pesqueras. Estamos identificando que cerca del 62% de los ecosistemas que hemos podido mapear en estos países que están en ese listado, como por ejemplo Costa Rica, Islas Cayman, Cuba, Jamaica, Haití, tienen una presencia importante de los pueblos afrodescendientes en esos procesos de manejo. Un tema muy sensible que es el de la creación de áreas marinas protegidas y otros protocolos internacionales. Estamos superponiéndolos con las zonas de pesquería y navegación para mostrar qué es lo que pasa ahí y cuáles son los desafíos de gobernanza. Asimismo todos los proyectos de infraestructura ya están mapeados. Como no sería posible el tema de cambio climático y el impacto diferencial del cambio climático sobre las áreas pobladas por los afrodescendientes. Aquí les dejo el link para las plataformas de mapeo y los documentos de memoria que se han hecho y por supuesto es una plataforma abierta, así que ustedes pueden descargar todo lo que consideren relevante para sus trabajos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. A very, very interesting study. And really speaks to the whole of society approach to ocean and coastal conservation. So we'll move on to Adeel Paredes and we'll hear from the Bonefish and Tarpon Trust, Conflict Resolution Strategic Plan for Socioecological Systems in the Yucatan Peninsula as a model for improved conservation and management of coastal and ocean resources in protected areas.
Good morning everyone. This conflict resolution strategic plan that we're presenting is a result of several studies and assessments that we've conducted in the area of Yucatan and Campeche. And overall, the approach that we take is to conduct socioecological research, mainly in fish habitats, people, conservation and management. But we go an extra step in developing strategies, especially because we want to look at research and propose holistic resolutions that are based on needs and challenges. Now our science that we conduct, also because of my background, is mostly interdisciplinary, where we take into account several sciences such as biological, ecological, economic, social, just to name a few. We have also conducted studies on viruses and other disciplines as well. Now, we are able to do a lot of things with this kind of... Because all of the coastal areas, all the way from Campeche, Yucatan, Quintana Roo and Belize, we share this similar system that includes the culture and of course livelihoods. And with this, we have been conducting research on fish movement, population, conservation and management. We have also conducted economic studies to justify the importance of livelihoods activities. And also we have been conducting also assessments with... The area and we have always been developing that network. We have this scientific background in-house, but we also were able to support and also create greater links with other students and researchers in the region. Now, the area where I work or concentrate is considered as a blue economy. It's called the flats fishery in a scientific term, but locally or regional it's known as fly fishing. But this activity is very important as it promotes the conservation of ecosystems. And with that, we have been able to ensure that people have good practices and with this, taking care of the environment, but also looking at the income, we also have been able to ensure that other activities are not affected. In other words, this is what we would term as a blue economy: environment, people and of course the benefit of others. In a previous assessment that I conducted with my colleagues in Campeche, is that we found that between two communities there was a larger interconnectivity between or among sectors. And that's because in that leaders played more of a crucial role in facilitating collaboration. Now in the other community, there was more of a fragmented or more of a limited connectivity. And that's because although there was local leaders present, they were more of... these leaders were more connected to external actors rather than with the communities, users and stakeholders. Now the findings from what we're basing the proposed strategies in that we need to strengthen local governance, increase collaboration, but also increase knowledge exchange, so that we're able to transform to a bottom-up system. Now, the six goals strategy, one, we need to be able to do scientific research, create or that network or that framework or micro regions, so that we're able to have more of that social cohesion. But we will need, of course, education and outreach to inform people and with that they should be able to have more sustainable uses and practices. But also that will be more of our outcomes where they are now taking part in control and surveillance of their own fishery. In conclusion and recommendation, resource managers, we concluded that resource managers have a greater network with more policy than with social networks, with the people, with the bottom down there. So in other words, we need to be able to learn and work more with users and the communities, just as how we assess fishery resources and then develop regulations and policies, we should also be able to understand people and their dynamics and make decisions to protect them. Lastly, these type of approaches also inform or produce information for our ecosystem-based management. In other words, scientific communities, organizations as Bonefish and Tarpon Trust, we should work together so that we would be able to support resource managers, but also academia, so that they would be able to integrate the human component, the people part into management. With that, I conclude and thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Understanding people dynamics, very critical, very critical. I can see that we're gonna have some interesting discussions. Our final speaker is Carolina Garcia from INBEMAR and she will be speaking on the Adapt Ocean Best Practices Training Course. We've been hearing a lot about capacity development and of course this speaks directly to it.
Thank you Lorna. Buenas tardes a todos. Voy a hablarle sobre una... un piloto que espero que sea inspirador para todos ustedes. Adapt es el resultado de la búsqueda del grupo de Ocean Best Practices de la COI sobre los vacíos de información y las brechas de datos necesarios para mejorar la observación oceánica. Con recursos de la Agencia de Cooperación Noruega se logró tener la oportunidad de poder sacar adelante este proyecto. El objetivo general es el... fue el de explorar el impacto potencial del programa de capacitación de la Ocean Best Practices y de Adapt, en las mejores prácticas abordando las brechas y necesidades regionales, a su vez promover el desarrollo y adopción de mejores prácticas para la observación oceánica en América Latina y el Caribe. Específicamente tenemos adoptar y adaptar las mejores prácticas. Uno, para apoyar las prioridades en cuanto a la observación de los océanos y la integración de nuevos socios a los programas de monitoreo local y regional en curso. Y adaptar los procedimientos operativos estándar y los procedimientos básicos existentes para contribuir a la interoperabilidad y convergencia de métodos en redes existentes, en observaciones existentes y en la disponibilidad regional de instrumentación. Este es el listado de Grupo de Equipo Adapt. Tenemos un grupo de asesores, un grupo de líderes, entre ellos Ana Carolina Peralta, quien fue el coordinador técnico temático de esta iniciativa. Ana Carolina Mazuco de la Ocean Teacher Global Academy, la secretaria. Jay Pearlman, George Betahakis, Pauline Simpson, por supuesto, y Talen Reimer. De nuestro lado, INBEMAR como coordinación del Centro Regional de Entrenamiento para Países en Habla Hispana ubicado en INBEMAR, hicimos la facilitación logística de esta iniciativa. ¿Qué hicimos? Lo inicial fue realizar una evaluación preliminar a partir de una encuesta en la que levantamos necesidades y logramos hacer una priorización. De esta priorización se llegó a un esquema rápido de temas, para luego sí con el equipo de asesores externos crear el diseño de contenido del curso y finalmente llegar a la implementación de tal curso. Esta solamente una muestra de cómo el contenido del curso fue montado dentro de la plataforma de Ocean Teacher Global Academy y un poco de la agenda. Con este proceso que les acabo de mencionar entonces recibimos 54 aplicaciones de diferentes áreas de ciencia, sobre todo del Caribe. Logramos de esas 54 aplicaciones seleccionamos 16 participantes de siete países para luego impartir el primer taller en español. Teníamos la idea de hacerlo en inglés y español, por ahora hemos cumplido el de español y lo que hicimos fue que los estudiantes tratarán de vivir todo el ciclo de vida del dato, desde que se toma la planeación del protocolo hasta su análisis y su procesamiento para publicación en Ovis. Olvidé decirle, en la priorización lo hicimos para monitoreo para dos tipos de ecosistemas: pastos marinos y litoral reposo, aplicando protocolos sugeridos por todos estos expertos. Con esto vemos un poquito de la experiencia vivida por el grupo de investigadores. Tuvimos representantes de República Dominicana, de México, Perú, incluso de Ecuador y de Venezuela y de Colombia. Fue bastante enriquecedor incluso al final del curso tratamos de diseñar una estrategia en la que los mismos estudiantes pudieran identificar cómo podían adaptar y la forma en que podían adoptar estos protocolos de monitoreo de ecosistemas. Este es el grupo de felices estudiantes que vivieron la experiencia. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much Carolina. Now we go to the audience. Okay, so we have fifteen minutes. Questions please, go ahead sir. Oh, you have the microphone. Yes, sir.
Hola, buenas tardes. Comenzaba mucho gusto con Pablo Caicedo del INBEMAR. Era más un comentario acerca de las ponencias que hicieron. Me parece súper importante e interesante tocar el tema de que el océano, per se, no inicia en el océano, sino que también tiene otras variables muy importantes que incluso vienen desde las cuencas hidrográficas. Entonces el comentario es buscar cómo integrar estos diferentes datos que no solamente se empate el océano sino que vienen incluso desde las cuencas, los ríos, ecosistemas costeros como los manglares, pastos marinos, entre otros, para entender el océano. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much and very, very true. Please go ahead.
Muchas gracias. Esta pregunta es para la doctora Giovanna. Primero que todo muchas gracias por mencionar una de las grandes victorias de Latinoamérica que fue la Ley Love Quenchy y los espacios en Podo de Chile, los espacios costeros y marinos de los pueblos originarios. Y frente a eso mi pregunta es que en el escenario actual que vemos de flexibilización de las licencias ambientales y leyes y victorias que hemos tenido están en riesgo como la Ley Love Quenchy, ¿cómo ves el panorama en los próximos años para el reconocimiento de la marioeuridad y el papel de las comunidades y comunidades pesqueras en las nuevas decisiones que se vayan a tomar sobre el maritorio?
Vale, muchas gracias por la pregunta. Creo que hay buenos señales en el mundo regulatorio de los derechos de tenencia marina. Ya se creó un fondo de financiación dentro del TENIO Facility, que es este mecanismo financiero para que los estados puedan reconocer derechos de tenencia en la tierra y ahora en el mar. Entonces eso significa que hay acuerdos ya en marcha. Colombia es uno de los países piloto como lo es también Costa Rica, Honduras. Honduras ya tiene una regulación para el pueblo garifuna en la extensión del área de los callos considerada como parte de la maritinidad de estos pueblos. Tiene instrumentos ya sobre de tenencia marina Brasil. Y nosotros tenemos una figura dentro de la Ley 70, que es la Ley de Comunidades Afrodescendientes, que habla de los espacios de uso preferente que son conexos a los títulos colectivos. Entonces los manglares y las playas y otras áreas de baja mar se entienden como parte del espacio, digamos, de uso preferente. Solo que como tú lo indicas pues ahí hay otras dinámicas de neoliberalización y problemáticas que impiden y que chocan con este enfoque de derechos. Pero es interesante el trabajo de campo que hemos hecho en República Dominicana también nos está mostrando iniciativas en esa vía y bueno otros que están allí en la plataforma que les mostré, otros casos documentados. Pero bueno, ojalá que lo de Chile no tenga ningún retroceso y al contrario siga siendo el ejemplo para aumentar el estándar de derechos en los pueblos del mar.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other questions, comments? Yes, go ahead Marco.
Muchas gracias. Una pregunta para Margarita desde su oficina de coordinación del diseño. Quería preguntar cómo las personas aquí que están generando datos podrían contar con el apoyo de su oficina para ser proveedores a este ecosistema digital.
Gracias Marco. Me escuchas, sí. Bueno, nosotros parte digamos de abrir y de ofrecer el soporte que tenemos es que cada ciertos meses tenemos sesiones abiertas donde la gente se puede conectar y puede hablar con nosotros. En el equipo somos dos personas, está Adam Ledbetter que es el manager principal y estoy yo que es la más la parte soporte en administrativo y en operaciones. Pero también tenemos un grupo de expertos que nos ayudan con su trabajo, digamos voluntario y ellos a veces también participan en esas sesiones dando tips y datos así y... perdón... y recomendaciones sobre cómo qué estándares usar, qué formatos usar. Depende eso también mucho del tipo de datos, que ese es uno de los problemas que no es nada todo estándar sino varía dependiendo del tipo de datos. Pero otra de las cosas que tenemos son sesiones abiertas también en una mesa de ayuda y un link en línea a nuestra página donde la gente que tenga preguntas puede también enviarlas y nosotros nos encargamos de conectarlos con expertos que puedan ayudarles a conectar. Porque somos conscientes también que no todo el mundo es experto en datos y eso no debería ser un impedimento para aportar y conectarse a los sistemas. Y parte de eso pues nuestro trabajo es dar el soporte para que las personas pues puedan conectarse de la forma más fácil y fluida posible. conectarse de la forma más fácil y fluida posible. Y otra de las cosas es que también hemos estado desarrollando junto con OTGA, que ahora veo que lo mencionan, varios cursos de unos dirigidos más a profesionales que están empezando, que es en calidad de datos y cómo hacer protocolos de QI QC, pero también estamos trabajando en un entrenamiento ya más general con puntos focales de las regiones que puedan ayudarnos a construir una comunidad alrededor de los datos, que eso también es muy importante.
Thank you very much, Margarita. And we are going to be coming back to you, because I think that your Caribbean as a regional intergovernmental process also has a role to play in terms of ocean data sharing. I'd like to go to Carlos. If there are no other questions, let me just make sure. So Carlos, outstanding water quality program, but I'm just wondering what lessons from Colombia's experience could help harmonize marine water quality monitoring across the wider Caribbean region? How can we benefit from your experience here across both Latin America and the English and Dutch-speaking Caribbean?
Bueno, desde nuestra experiencia pues es importante destacar que el RECA es un monitoreo que viene funcionando desde hace muchos años y que toda esta información es útil para la toma de decisiones, para los diseños, para las políticas públicas, y le sirve también a todas estas corporaciones que buscan organizar pues sus diseños y poder establecer normativas, cierto, que permiten conocer pues a fondo lo que está sucediendo en las áreas costeras. Por otro lado, pues en Indemar también tenemos el Grupo de Emergencias GAMA, que se encarga también de atender estos eventos en donde nosotros entregamos los insumos para las autoridades y que puedan tomar el control sobre lo que está sucediendo en estos espacios.
Thank you very much, Carlos. And moving on then to Ariel. This is a community-based governance model. How can it be replicated or scaled across the Caribbean?
There has been many challenges in that. One of the biggest weaknesses that we have had is we always say there's a lack of information. Now, we're generating information. Now, we need to be able to apply them, and that's one has been overstated and very important in this symposium. Now, what we need to do is to be able to work together, come along with different disciplines, different symposiums as well, into collaborating together, because it's a model that can be applied throughout the Caribbean. It's all the same communities, the same culture, the same livelihoods. But now, the lack, we have been lagged or we are stuck in a system where we're looking at the biological part of management, the ecosystem part only, but we're not integrating how people interact, how people use this. Now, and that's mainly because funding to implement this kind of models is very limited. It's mostly funders that want to look at tangible outcomes, but they're not seeing the multiple outcomes or benefits that can be obtained through this type of model. So having that should be able to start resolving and going back to what we initially created over 15, 20 years ago, where there was community engagement, stakeholders were participating, they were the ones taking care of their resource, and we have abandoned that. We need to go back into that system where we're integrating the community into management, into policymaking, into scientific research, and of course, and looking at the benefits for them in the long term.
Thank you very much for that. Very important. And I come to Carolina. So of course, we have been working on this together for quite some time. But looking for sustainability beyond the training program and the project being completed, how do you maintain engagement with those who have been trained? And how are you able to assess whether the training has been effective?
Gracias, Lorna, por tu pregunta. Sí, ha sido un reto, pero particularmente desde la experiencia de Indemar como Centro Regional de Entrenamiento, hemos visto que generalmente terminados los cursos se crean pequeñas comunidades que se mantienen en contacto, se comparten información, y muchos de los instructores quedamos en contacto. Es una opción. Segundo, los cursos les abren la ventana a todos esos estudiantes, a todo lo que oferta la IODI y la COI. Entonces, entran en conocimiento de todos los programas y las oportunidades y entran a esta sociedad de COI, que resulta bien interesante. Y segundo, hemos pensado que el tipo de diseño de cursos de entrenamiento a entrenadores es lo que permitiría, si somos un poquito más estrictos, podríamos empezar a replicar un poco más con la enseñanza a unos cuantos instructores y que ellos repliquen internamente. Igualmente, la actualización de los cursos, cuando tenemos cursos anuales, cada año no se replica simplemente si nos tratamos de buscar primero la actualización y la mejora de los contenidos. Así, una persona puede hacer un curso en un año, y a los dos años, seguro que tendrá una mejor versión de ese curso.
Thanks to all of you. And in the last two minutes, as with the last panel, I have one quick question for each of you. So just keep passing the mic until we get all the way to Carolina. This has been mostly about data sharing and capacity development. So the question is, can you identify one shared priority based on this discussion that would advance the goals of the Ocean Decade in the Caribbean? Now, a part of the Ocean Decade's priority, of course, is ocean data sharing. So one priority for each of you that you think we should do.
Bueno, yo creo que una de las principales es seguir entrenando a la gente en temas de datos y desarrollar redes que estén, pues enfocadas a eso. Y más allá de entrenar o teniendo eso en cuenta, es cambiar un poco el enfoque a cómo se comunican los datos, porque a veces la gente piensa que es algo muy técnico, entonces no se comprometen mucho cuando no tienen tanto el conocimiento. Pero lo importante también es compartir esas historias y esos casos de éxito que hay detrás de compartir bien los datos. Por ejemplo, el que estaban mencionando con este Atlas de las comunidades afrodescendientes, o sea, eso es un caso de éxito y son cosas que sirven para vender, que es importante, y una de las prioridades debería ser comunicar efectivamente esos beneficios y eso.
Yo creo que iría por la validación y legitimación de los datos que construyen los propios pueblos, porque hay una jerarquía entre la información científica y la no científica. Hay una, digamos, taxonomía muy equivocada sobre cuál es el lugar de los datos de los pueblos de pescadores y navegantes y otro tipo de sujetos y actores del mar, que parece información accesoria, subsidiaria, pero no ciencia en el estricto sentido. Creo que ahí hay mucho por mejorar epistemológicamente, pero también metodológicamente, porque hay muchos retos por incluir y darle un nivel, el nivel que merece la gente que realmente conoce qué está pasando y qué está sucediendo en los océanos con los recursos hidrobiológicos, no, y otros aspectos.
Bueno, como lo ha mencionado, es de vital importancia saber cuáles son los datos que cada quien tiene y poder trabajarlos de la forma adecuada. Es por esto que nosotros también hemos estado desarrollando una serie de talleres, de cursos, talleres, en donde vamos enseñándole a las personas, cierto, a las comunidades, para que puedan utilizar esta información, ya sea de calidad de agua, pues la parte de contaminación de microplásticos, que es lo que trabajamos nosotros. Y pues, como lo ha mencionado las colegas, es importante de que esto se enseñe de una buena manera para que la gente entienda la importancia de trabajar con esta información.
We need to be able to gather information, but gather information based on the needs and challenges that we have. And with that, just the proposed goals and strategies would fulfill largely what is what the UN is largely promoting in the region at different scales from local, regional, but also internationally. Hence, working with the people, with academia, with other NGOs, and resource managers is very important so that we're able to fulfill these goals and they are largely aligned again with what the UN and the conference is calling for.
Bien de mi parte, creería que la labor de crear conciencia es la que va a permitir que se reconozca que todos pueden poner información a diferentes niveles, que existen alternativas para darle una validación a esos datos, una mejora, pero no es la única. Y sí, básicamente, para mí, la ocean literacy es muy importante y es la que permite la inclusión del ciudadano, no experto, pero que es lo que nos va a permitir lograr varios de los objetivos, porque el ciudadano no solo se estudia, sino que se vive, se explota, se transporta, en fin.
Thanks to all of you, and thanks for the excellent recommendations. Training, validation and legitimization of data, very, very important. Find the data where it is and begin using it. Training, making sure that our people are trained in data, ocean literacy, broad-scale ocean literacy. Excellent set of recommendations for us going forward. And thanks to all of you for very thought-provoking presentations. And that is the close of our panel. Please give our panelists a round of applause. Okay, thank you.